Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the air quality informational session and public hearing for Ameritai Manufacturing. My name is Caitlin DeVries. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'll be running things here in the background tonight, but I wanted to take time to thank everybody for for joining us today and go through some housekeeping here before we start. So first off, all lines are going to be muted during the meeting. We are recording, as you can see, this meeting, and you will get an email link to the recording when it becomes available. So if you want to ask a question or make a statement in the hearing portion of the evening tonight, you can put those questions in the Q and A box, which is down at the bottom of your screen in your Zoom toolbar. Another option is to click the hand icon also in your Zoom toolbar, and that will raise your hand and let us know that you have a question. We will call your name and unmute you and allow you to be able to speak. And the last way at the end of the evening, if you have, for those of you calling in, you can do also ask a question or make a statement, and you can do so by typing pound two on your phone. So those are going to be the ways that you'll be able to ask a question this evening. So with the housekeeping taken care of, I'm going to pass it over to Jennifer Dixon, who will be moderating tonight's session.
Thanks, Caitlin. Appreciate it. Thanks for setting the stage there. We do have some folks calling in, it looks like, so having pound two be available for folks to be able to raise their hand when we get to the question and answer is going to be potentially pretty important. A couple of things that we want to just go over before we get into the meat of the evening tonight is how things are going to work. So when we do the virtual public meeting and hearing, it kind of has two distinct portions. So the first part of the night is going to be a little bit of information disseminating to all of you. So we're going to have a short presentation from our permit engineer. We're going to be introducing our staff, kind of talking through how that part is going to go. And then after that, we'll open it up for question and answer. And that's going to give us the ability to have a little bit of dialogue with you, answer some questions if you have them, things like that. The second part of the evening is a little bit different, and that's the hearing part. And I like to just talk about this in the beginning, so folks know that once we get to the hearing part, it's a little bit more formalized. There's a statement that's read. When we speak with you and you put comments on the record, sometimes people will ask a question in their comment, but we can't respond to the questions during that part of the night. So I'll remind you about this again, once we get to that part, but I wanted to let you know there's these two distinct portions of the evening. The first part is going to be that a little bit of information, a little short presentation, some question and answer, where hopefully we can give, have some dialogue with everybody, and then we'll get to that hearing portion where it's a look a little bit more formalized. So in a second here, I'm going to have our division director come on, and she is going to introduce herself and welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. So this is Annette Switzer, and I think that you have your camera on here, and as soon as you're ready, go ahead and welcome these folks to our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Jen. I just wanted to say that we do appreciate you taking the time to meet with us tonight to ask questions and share your thoughts and comments on the proposed air permit. Like Jen said, I'm Annette Switzer, the Air Quality Division Director, and I'm the decision maker for this permit action. What that means is I'll be listening closely to the conversation tonight, so that when the comment period closes, I have the information I need to make and evaluate what direction the permit decision will take. Talking with community members is a really important part of the permitting process, and the comments you give often lead to positive changes in permits. Tonight, you're going to hear from my staff about how we look at permit applications that come to us and what types of comments we can and cannot use in our decision making on an air permit. We will also talk to you about the draft permit and parts of it that may be of particular interest. We know it is a summer night in Michigan, and we have limited numbers of them every year. So I'll let you get back to the reason you joined us tonight and took time away from other things that you may normally be doing. I'll be listening the rest of the meeting and hearing as I encourage you to ask questions, submit comments if you'd like to. Thank you again for being here tonight, and Jen, I'll pass it back to you so we can get the rest of the conversation started.
Yeah, thanks for that. And if the rest of my staff wants to just turn their cameras on a minute, I want to introduce folks, but I appreciate that comment about the summer nights. I know that my family is at the beach tonight without me, and so I am appreciating being here with all of you, but also I do have a little bit of envious spirit with their swimming in Lake Michigan right now. So just wanted to put that out there, but we obviously want to get to what we're here for tonight. We don't want to take anything away from that. So want to introduce folks that we have here on the panel tonight. So the first person that I want to introduce is Marina Ostazuski. She is our permit engineer for this project. You're going to be mostly hearing from her. She's going to start off our information session in just a couple of minutes, but we have some other folks on our panel tonight that are going to be helping with our question and answer portion. So we have Doreen Lainer. She is our toxicologist, and she, part of the job that toxicologists do is they help the permit engineer in reviewing certain toxic air contaminants and making sure that levels of those contaminants stay within the rules and regulations. We also have Jeff Korniski. He's the Assistant District Supervisor in our Detroit District Office. So him and his staff are basically, you know, boots-on-the-ground types of folks out in the district, people that are inspecting this facility and things like that. Erica Wolf is in our air monitoring section. So air monitoring, you're going to hear two things that are a little bit confusing sometimes, air monitoring and air modeling. So what air monitoring folks do is they look at information about pollutants from stationary monitoring, measuring locations throughout the state, and she can talk more about that if anybody has questions about it. But there are parts of that that sometimes come into permit decision, and they also help us call, give us information to call Air Quality Action Days and things like that that you might have been hearing in the news lately. We also have our modeling folks on. So what the modelers do for permits is they take the information that a permit applicant has, the pollutant information, and they run a computer model that puts these like little pretend monitors all over around the facility in neighborhoods and things like that, and they basically determine if any of the pollutants that the company is asking for are going to impact or not meet rules and regulations in the vicinity of the facility. So we have Stephanie Hangspah here. She's also one of our meteorologists, so she also helps call our Air Quality Action Day, so it's pretty cool to have her on tonight as well. I think I got everybody on the panel. Let me just double check and make sure that I didn't miss every, anybody, because I want to make sure you guys get to meet everybody. You'll get to meet them more in a little while, so if y'all want to turn your cameras off, but Marina, you got to keep yours on, because I know I'm going to be passing over to you in just a minute here. So just want to go, as Marina's getting ready for her presentation for you, just run again, just through how the evening's going to go. We're going to do a little short presentation on the proposed permits, just to lay the groundwork. It's not super, super detailed, but we want you to know what Ameritai was asking for and how we evaluated that information, and then what kind of came of it. Then we'll follow that with the question and answer session. So like Caitlin said, if you have questions while Marina's talking, feel free to just type them in the question box while she's going on, and we'll get to those at the end of her presentation, and we'll be able to talk to the rest of the panelists as well if you want to. Once that part's over, so that part will be over either at seven o'clock or when we're done answering and asking questions, whichever comes first. So we don't want to wait until seven if you guys are already done asking your questions. Just want to get to the comment portion. We're happy to do that. But we're also happy to get to that hearing portion, you know, a little bit early if we want to. So once we get past the hearing portion, there will be a few other things that we go over, and that will be basically, you know, where can you find more information? Of course, how can you make a comment? You do not have to make a comment tonight if you don't want to. There's time after this meeting to submit comments in other ways, so don't feel like you have to comment tonight if you're not quite ready. And then, like I said, we'll just give you some contact information and things like that. So that being said, Marina, you can go ahead and start sharing your screen, and then whenever you are ready to go, you can go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So like Jen said, my name is Marina Ostazuski, and I am the Lead Permit Engineer who worked with a team of air quality staff here at Eagle to review the Ameritai manufacturing air permit application. Before we get into the details of the product or of the project, I would like to briefly talk about what the Air Quality Division does and how the permitting process works. So air pollution comes from many different sources, including power plants, fuel burning vehicles, and various industrial sources. The overall mission of the AQD is to protect public health and the environment. We provide this protection by using our authority under the state of, the state and federal laws through the regulation of industrial sources. AQD staff do many different things. We monitor levels of air pollutants. We look at air contaminants to make sure that the public health is protected. We conduct inspections of regulated facilities such as Ameritai, and we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure that the proposed operations comply with the rules and regulations that are in place to protect public health. The Air Quality Division has the authority to permit sources of air pollutants. However, I would like to point out a few items the draft permit does not cover, and that we do not have the ability to regulate. These include Sony noise and traffic on public roads. If you have questions or concerns about these items, you will want to talk to your local government. Additionally, the AQD does not determine whether a facility is needed when reviewing an air permit application. We evaluate a project to ensure that it meets the applicable air quality rules and regulations. I'd like to give an overview of the air permitting process. First, the company decides that they even want to install, modify, or construct a source of air emissions. Then the company submits a permit application to the AQD. The application is then reviewed by an engineer like myself to review the information from the company to decide if their requests can meet the state and federal air quality regulations. During the review, other AQD staffs are involved to help with different parts of the review. This includes the review of toxic air contaminants that are also called TACs and how the emissions may impact the surrounding community. If these rules and regulations are met, the engineer creates a draft permit. If public comment is required, as in this case, the draft permit is posted for the public to comment on. The public comment process is very important, which is why we are talking with you tonight. Once the public comment period ends, we evaluate all of the submitted comments. The comments can lead to changes in the permit and the final decision. Finally, a decision is made on the permit application. This could be to either approve the permit as written, approve the permit with changes, or to deny the permit. This decision is based on whether the company's application can meet the air quality regulations. So before we go into what Ameritai is proposing, I would like to give a brief overview of what they do at their facility. So Ameritai operates in existing titanium processing and manufacturing facility. The process begins with crushing titanium scrap into chip-sized pieces using an underwater crushing process, followed by washing the titanium to remove any oils. The titanium chips are further processed depending on the type of product being made. First, there is a process that heats iron and titanium to combine the two metals. Then the metal goes through a series of crushers to create what is called a ferro-titanium product. Another product that they do involves heating titanium to make it brittle. The brittle titanium is ground to a specific size, heated and altered again, so that it is no longer brittle. The metal then goes through additional crushers and screens to create a powdered product. A different titanium powder product is made by adding calcium to some of the existing titanium powder made in the previous process. The blend is heated to remove oxygen, and then it is ground down to size. This application involves the ferro-titanium and powder processes of Ameritai's operations. Ameritai has submitted an application to increase the daily metal throughput in the powder manufacturing processes. The existing annual limits were not proposed to be changed. They also submitted an application to replace control devices with the powder processes and one of the ferro-titanium crushers. Both the existing and proposed control devices are called wet scrubbers, which control particulates. And lastly, to remove casting equipment from the permit, because it is now owned by a different company called Tri-Tech. That equipment is operating under PTI 20-23. Based on the information provided by Ameritai, the AQD has determined that Tri-Tech is an independent facility from Ameritai. While reviewing a proposed project, the AQD looks at a number of rules that will specifically apply to that project. This includes any applicable state and federal rules. There's the evaluation of proposed emissions and impacts against those rules. There's an air toxics review, and we perform air modeling where applicable. At the end of the day, we wanted to know whether Ameritai's proposed project would meet these requirements. Michigan has health-based screening levels designed to protect against health issues like developing cancer or breathing problems. Potential air impacts based on computer modeling were compared to the screening levels. Our review of the proposed emissions determined they would not violate the health-based screening levels. To ensure compliance, Ameritai's permit would have restrictions to ensure specific pollutants do not exceed their proposed emission rates. A permit is a legally enforceable document with a list of requirements the company must comply with based on how the application was evaluated. Requirements in the permit ensure the project operates as described in the application and reviewed by myself and the rest of the permitting team. The existing permit has requirements such as emission limits, material limits, reporting, operational, monitoring, and record-keeping conditions. In order for Ameritai's proposed project to comply with the state and federal requirements, aspects of their current permit were altered as part of the proposed draft conditions. The proposed draft permit has the following changes to Ameritai's existing permit. There are conditions to ensure the new emission control equipment operates and are maintained as required. The allowed metal used in the powder's manufacturing processes were increased, which was part of Ameritai's application. Even with this increase, air quality rules and regulations still be met. Monitoring and record-keeping conditions were included to determine compliance with the limits. Next, only certain types of metals would be allowed in the powder manufacturing process. This is laid out in the draft permit, so other metals that were not reviewed could not be used. Next, the draft added restrictions to the amount of nickel and hexavalent chromium specifically in the metal used at Ameritai. This was added because of how the company calculated their emissions and to ensure compliance with Michigan's health-based screening levels. As mentioned previously, impacts from Ameritai's proposed emissions are below health-based screening levels. Part of making this determination involved the zoning of the land impacted by the project. In the future, if any industrial land impacted by the project is rezoned to be utilized by the general public, such as residential areas, Ameritai must redemonstrate how the facility will comply with Michigan's air toxics rules. Lastly, the proposed draft maintenance equipment that is now permitted and operated by Tri-Tech under PTI 20-23. I believe this is Jeff, and I'm going to pass it off to Jeff.
Jeff, for some reason, we can't hear you. I can see, it looks like you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Try it one more time. Nope. So little bit of technical difficulties. What I'm going to have Jeff do is sign out of Zoom and then sign back in again. Jeff, I'll go ahead and talk a little bit through this slide and move us more towards the panelist portion of the night, because this is going to be our last part of the presentation. Apologies for that. Sometimes technology gets in our way, and we need to be a little bit flexible. So one of the things that I know Jeff really wanted to emphasize with this slide is that him and his staff are part of inspecting this facility, and one of the things that they do for a facility like this is do regular inspections. So the inspector is responsible for determining compliance with the permit conditions and all those state and federal regulations that Marina talked us through. And then Jeff, let's see if you can, if we can hear you now, because I see you're back. Nope. It's not going to do it. So what you might want to do is just go into your settings, and that's going to be your audio settings next to your microphone, and just make sure that you are doing, that you have save a system checked. Just see if we can hear you. Nope, it's not going to do it, huh? Were you using headphones at all? Can you give me a thumbs up or not? Nope. Okay, yeah, I didn't think so. All right, well, we'll try to send you out one more time and then send you back in and see if we can figure it out then. Otherwise, I don't know if Caitlin, you might be able to chat with Jeff on the side to see if we can figure out how to get him on. I don't know if when he's coming in, he's just selecting a different audio than he should be, but we are going to need him to maybe answer some questions. So we'll see if we can get him on and/or we might be able to send him a phone number so that he can just call in on this instead of joining us by video. Apologies for that again, sometimes that happens. But also just wanted to let people know that we, we do these regular inspections, but then we also are very responsive to any complaints or concerns that are either called in or sent in through our online complaint system. So please feel free to let us know if you have any comments or concerns about the facility as well, because it is an operating facility despite having these permit revisions that are out for comment right now. All right, let's try it one more time. I can see you're unmuted. I don't think we're going to be able to hear you again. No. All right, Caitlin, maybe you can send Jeff the phone number to call in for the meeting, and then potentially we can just have him on the phone to answer some questions.
Yep, I will do that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, sorry about that. I was, I should have said, and I'm waiting for your response. All right, well, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to go ahead and share my screen over yours, Marina, and if I can invite my, the rest of my staff that are on for the panel discussion to turn their cameras back on so that we can get to the question and answer. I see that we have at least one question in the chat right now, and I saw that we have a hand raised too, so give me just one second here. We'll get you back on. All right. All right, so just as a reminder, of course, you just heard from Marina. We're trying to hear from Jeff. We're trying desperately. We'll see if we can get him on. And then we have Stephanie Hangspah again. She's from our air modeling unit, and then we have Doreen Lainer from our toxics. She's our toxicologist, and Erica Wolf is in our air monitoring section. So I saw that we have at least one hand raised. So Crystal, hold on one second, and I'm going to unmute, allow you to unmute, so you should be able to ask your question.
I'm sorry, I did not realize my hand was raised.
Your hand was raised, Crystal. No questions right now? That's fine. No big deal.
Not at all.
I will, we'll go ahead and put your hand down, and it's all, it's all good. It happens to the best of us, you know? It happens to the best of us. All right, so one of the questions that has come into the question box is, is the company in a consent agreement with Eagle? So I did want Jeff to be able to speak to this a little bit more, but yes, they are right now. So I don't know Caitlin too. I know you're busy trying to figure out getting Jeff on, but at some point, we will share the link to that in the chat if folks are interested, but the short answer to that question is yes. So this is a little bit, yes, this is the same type of, a little bit the same kind of question, so that this question is around the consent agreement as well, and the questioner is just saying, you know, we have had numerous problems with particulate matter and odors coming from the facility. So I guess what I would reiterate to that is definitely use that online complaint form if you, if that feels comfortable. Otherwise, we can also share, we do share later on in the presentation, the 1-800 number that you can call to, you know, verbally give us a complaint. I think you can also call Jeff directly. We'll share his number later on in the presentation as well. He's happy to take any concerns, complaints that folks have. It's one of those things with these that it's a lot easier for us to get the complaints as they are coming in so that we can get staff out there to try to deal with those. All right, so I have a question coming in from Julius. Julius, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, but you should be able to answer, ask your question. There you go, yep. Hopefully, we can hear you.
Cumulative impact. I understand that you only address certain issues, and local businesses address other issues, but the longevity of those issues that were just peoples erased about particulates, which I know, I'm not a scientist, I'm just a neighbor that lives in the neighborhood. That was a longstanding issue. That wasn't something that would resolve over one year, two years, three years, four years, or five years. And so the health impact, though it was initially put out maybe four or five years earlier, didn't get resolved for a number of times. And then the other issue is that the things that you mentioned, I don't know what they are, but they sound very toxic. And there's a certain level that we already have in our community from neighboring facilities of other toxins that they are emitting, and while that range might be suitable for that specific plant, that cumulative with the, is something that we have found with this facility, I just don't trust them, just based upon the number of times we as a community tried to outreach to them, the number of times we've been sparing off. You don't live here. I mean, you have to drive here to test it, so they, they know that. So they, whatever they got to do, circumvent the regs to make it work for their benefit to make a profit at our specified health and well-being, they're going to do. I don't want you to have any ambiguity or any confusion about that. You know, the, I'm not a, I'm not a technical person, but I know that this is a certain amount of time it's going to take for you to get here, and even if it's the same day, and they know that, and it's something that I hope you take into account that we've already suffered, myself, I've already suffered a number of years with this facility. They are not a good community partner. They're not here to be engaged with us as a community, and they're not here to be complying with your rules, as they clearly demonstrated in the past over a number of years, not a one year or two year. Thank you.
No, Julius, thank you for, for bringing that up. I think there are a couple of things that we can speak to, just as far as the way things are being reviewed, because yeah, you're absolutely right. There, this facility definitely has a history of non-compliance, and that's part of the reason why they have the consent order. It's also part of the reason why, why the review of this permit was specific in a lot of ways, why we wanted to have our toxicologist and our air modeler here to speak to some of those concerns. Reviewing this permit very thoroughly and accurately is also really super important to us. So I know, Jeff, we have you on the phone. I'd like you to just try to, I think I have to unmute you for a second. Nope, you should be good. Hopefully, you can talk, see.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yep, we sure can.
Okay, good.
So I'm going to come back to you on the consent order and the kind of history of non-compliance, but I do want to have Doreen talk a little bit about the toxics review, and then Doreen, once you are, you know, kind of gone through that a little bit, I do want to have Stephanie talk about the air modeling portion of that and how the pollutants are looked at, what goes into that air model. I know that's kind of a weird thing to use a computer to sort of look forward on what might be happening, but looking at those potential impacts is really, really important to looking at and speaking to some of the things that you brought up. So Doreen, I'm going to pass it over to you first, and then, once you're done, if you want to just pass the microphone basically over to Steph, I'd appreciate that. And speaking to some of the things that you brought up. So Dorian, I'm going to pass it over to you first and then once you're done, if you want to just pass the microphone basically over to Steph, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. I understand particulate matter is a major concern. Particulate matter. Is regulated. Federally. The smaller the particulate matter, the farther in it can go into your lungs. So there is, this is a concern. For all of us and. The. Chemicals that are being emitted from this process. I've thoroughly reviewed them. And they do meet our health protective. Screening levels. There is, there are two chemicals. One was nickel and one is hexavalent chromium. They're both carcinogens and they. The nickel was higher than. Our one in a million screening level risk. So it was modeled and the modeled impact. Fell on industrial. Property and a little portion of the railroad tracks. So. There's also something that we do. It's a secondary risk screening level. It's for a one in 100,000 risk. So the nickel did meet that secondary risk screening level. The hexavalent chromium. It's also a carcinogen. It also did not meet our initial risk screening level of one in a million risk. So. We did extra modeling and it also. Did not meet the secondary risk screening level of one in 100,000 risk. But the highest impacts. Were also in a small area of, of industrial property and. The railroad tracks. So. The areas that the public have access to are. They, they are. Below the one in one million. Cancer risk. So we did thoroughly evaluate. The emissions from this facility. Or from this permit and they do meet all of our. Health-based screening levels and. They also meet the, the federal regulations for a particulate matter. Jeff, do you want to, do you want to? Add anything or should I send it to Stephanie?
Yeah, I can speak to some of the, you know, the earlier concerns and it's true. So this facility has had a history of non-compliance. Probably beginning about 10 years ago, we started having some odor complaints. We issued. A violation notice for odors in 2016. And this led to further controls on their wash building where they initially put the. The titanium crushing and then they dry the original titanium as it comes in. Before it's processed into powders. Later on, we actually had a, a lot of their equipment, which they believe to be exempt from our rules. We determined to be, not be exempt at all. And we had them get a permit for a lot of the equipment that you have in the permit today. So that was one instance where we believe that they needed to have better controls and they're better monitoring than what they had previously had. And then about five years ago, they installed a number of equipment in their building along seven mile, which happens to be the equipment that got shifted over to Tri-Tech. And we entered into a consent order with them for the failure to obtain that permit initially. In fact, EPA and the state went out on inspections in 2019 and found. A few control equipments or one control that wasn't operating properly and that led to. Violations by both EPA and the state. The consent orders since have, have expired and so, and we, we do typically get about three or four complaints a year for this facility. So I would certainly encourage anyone to keep calling our number. We don't always get out immediately, but we do respond. And when we get those complaints and when we respond, that offers the opportunity for us to evaluate the facility. In addition to our typical inspection cycle. And so the complaints do generate responses from us and sometimes action. If we determine that the, you know, the fallout of the orders are, are not in compliance with our rules. So. I, the numbers that we have for, for, for our office and my number will be shared at the end of the presentation. And certainly keep calling those numbers when you experience odors or fallout and we'll respond accordingly.
Yep, thank you, Jeff. So I know this is, we've been talking a lot about this issue. So. And I, folks are putting other questions in the chat, which is wonderful. But I want to give Stephanie an opportunity to talk a little bit about the modeling part of it because. As you probably remember Marina talking, there's all these different pieces go into ensuring that this permit is going to be as protective as it possibly can be. So I just want to make sure that. If you guys have questions about any of these things that you have the opportunity to ask. So Stephanie, if you can explain a little bit more about the modeling, that would be really helpful.
Yes, I can. Basically dispersion modeling for a facility. What we do is take a computer program and we build the facility within a computer program. We put in all the buildings at the facility. We put in all the stacks or any type of equipment that will be emitting the different pollutants that we're, we're looking at, or we need to evaluate for. Any particular facility. So we put in for this one, I think it was anywhere from eight to 12 stacks that were emitting the different pollutants. Again, we, we put in all the buildings, we put the stacks exactly where they're at. We pretty much want to simulate what is happening as these emissions are coming out of the air, are out of the facility, out of the stacks. What happens when meteorology is applied to those emissions as they're coming out of the stacks? How does the meteorology influence the plumes as they're. Being emitted and traveling downwind from the facility? And basically what we want to do is determine what is the overall maximum impact. Of the individual pollutants. Well, how we do this is, you know, we talked about air, air monitors. Well, we can't monitor something that's not there. So what we do in the computer model. Is we put in what we call receptors, but where they're also kind of pseudo monitor, monitors, you can call them. We had over 2,700 of these pseudo receptors. The closest space or surrounding the facility and these receptors were surrounding roughly, I think it was almost two and a half of miles in any direction from the facility. So we're saying at each one of these individual points, I want to know what that impact is at each one of the thousands of receptors. And basically through that whole grid or all these pseudo receptors will take that, the highest impact and make sure that that. Impact is below the screening levels for the toxic pollutants that were evaluated specifically for this, this permit. To ensure that those are meeting the state limits that we have in place.
So thanks, Stephanie. One of the questions that had come in, which is a, which is a great question and it's oftentimes confusing is. How can we allow companies to come in and ask for increased emissions, especially when they've had compliance issues in the past? And so part of. The reason we can sometimes allow that to happen is that we still have to make sure we have to do all of these things that Doreen's talked about, that. Stephanie's talked about, that Marina has talked about. To make sure that what the company wants to do is actually doable under the rules and regulations and that we're going to be able to keep within those health protective limits and we're going to be able to apply those. To any sort of new ask that a company might have. So yes, it is increased, but it. Is, as long as it's still going to meet those rules and regulations and this thorough review we've been talking about shows that and demonstrates that to. To all of our staff. Then that is something, I apologize for my dog barking. If people can hear that. That is something that is allowable under the rules and regulations. So it can definitely be frustrating. But it is something that we have to review as these applications come in. We get our staff on board and we say, okay, is this thing going to meet? What the rules and regulations will allow us to do and it's a process and. We have to have all the folks on the team be able to do their part to be able to say like, yes, this is something that we can bring in front of the public and talk to them about. There was another question that came in here about the division of the two facilities. So Jeff, I'm going to pass this one over to you because it said, I think there might've just been a little bit of confusion. About the two facilities. So it says the presentation is being spoken as if Ameritai is the company requesting the new permit. Yes, that is true. This is an Ameritai request. But part of the request does have to do with Tri-Tech. So I'm going to have Jeff kind of talk about that division of those two facilities and. How that came about and how we made a determination, how we agreed or disagreed or whatever it was. I'll let him talk about it with the two facilities there.
Right. So. Yeah, this, so this, what this company was formerly known collectively as Global Titanium, which a lot of people would recognize that name. And then about five or six years ago, they renamed themselves Ameritai and it was about during that period when again, they opened that seven mile building. And added additional equipment. So the, the company expanded and then just recently about two years ago. The former owner of the, of Ameritai decided that. That he only wanted to operate the Tri-Tech. And the way that the, the air rules work. And we're getting, given this from EPA is that we determine stationary sources on three factors. One is the nature of the business. The next one is are the, are certain parcels of land upon which this equipment is operating? Are they? Continuous, continuously adjoint? Are they adjacent to each other? And the third one is. What is, is their common ownership? And if all those three criteria are met. Then we consider to be one stationary source. If any one of those criterion are not met. Then the source is split into multiple sources. So you can have processes that are relatively integrated. But if they're owned independently, they are by EPA's way of thinking and thus our way of thinking to separate sources. So in this case. The Tri-Tech equipment, the seven mile building equipment. Is split off from Ameritai because of the change in ownership and the limiting of the ownership to. To Tri-Tech independently and then to what is now called Chimera as the global source that owns Ameritai. So. Even though that they are, they all, they both use titanium, even though they sort of have the same business model, even though they're adjacent to one another. Because of the independent ownership of the two facilities, they are two facilities and not one facility any longer. In terms of the consent order and so forth and so on, that consent order expired after a certain amount of time. You know, companies are allowed to request the termination of consent orders and the company. Did request the termination of the consent order that Ameritai was under. And because those specific non-compliance issues that of installing equipment without a permit had been resolved and had not been repeated. The division decided it was appropriate to terminate that specific content consent order. That consent order was under Ameritai, even though it involved the equipment which eventually became Tri-Tech. But that occurred prior to the split of the two sources.
Thanks for that, Jeff. It sounds confusing. But it sounds like we did an evaluation of what they requested and it, we do have a specific policy and procedure that we walk through to make sure that that. Is an acceptable. Division of permitting. It is something that EPA requires us to do and we're very particular about it. So in this case. It did pass muster, but I know it does still sound like it's kind of a confusing topic of conversation for folks. I want to shift gears a little bit. There was a question that came in about the, the monitoring. So this would be like the parts in the permit Marina, I'm going to pass this one over to you where we're talking about how does the company. Keep records, monitor emissions and things like that. So I want to make sure that there's not really a confusion here about the kind of monitoring that they're doing of the emissions. Or that they would be doing if this permit is granted like it is based on how you wrote the permit. So is this a mechanical type of monitoring? Is this a record keeping? What exactly are we going to be requiring here as far as monitoring and record keeping go?
Yeah, so. It will be in the form of more of like record keeping. So there are material limits in the permit. So basically how much metal. Ameritai would be able to process in a certain. Period of time. There's a condition in there basically saying that they have to keep track of how much metal they are using per period of time. And then in addition, I mentioned earlier in the presentation. About how there were specific limits for nickel and hexavalent chromium. That would also be in the form of record keeping. They would have to. Keep track of, you know, the metal that they put on, putting inside of the, through the process. That they have the SDS or the, it's called a safety data sheet. Also known as an SDS of what is within that particular metal.
Thanks Marina. So this isn't a mechanical measuring of emissions coming out of a stack. It's not something like that. So I just want to be very clear. But this is a way that we determine compliance and it involves a calculation the company would have to do based on how many. How much metal they use, like Marina said, how it's processed. And then the way the math works is it kind of calculates what is being emitted and that's what they have to track. That's what has to be kept under. Specific limits in the permit. So it's not a, something that's put on a stack to measure. What's coming out or anything like that. So I just want to be very clear about that. There was a comment in here. About, you know, could there be continuous monitoring around the facility? Could there be continuous monitoring at the facility? That's not something that's currently in the permit right now, but that's a very, you know. A definitely a comment that could be made on this permit as it's written. So I just wanted to address that. It's not in, it's definitely not in the draft permit. At this point. There was another question about getting a layout of where the emission points are located at the Ameritai facility. So Marina, I don't. Know this. For sure, but do you know if there is a site layout map that came with the permit application that we would have access to that we could potentially share with folks?
I do believe there was a. A facility map within.
Okay.
Proposed, like within the application. I. Do not recall, tap my head, if there's like specific like stack locations. If, if that is what they were referring to.
Okay. No, I think that would be helpful and Stephanie might have something too with the modeling. So we will definitely share that. We can share that via email. We don't have it at our fingertips right now, but we can share that as follow up to. The meeting tonight. So hopefully that will be helpful. There was a question and a. That came in about. Buffering or like a buffer zone around the community. So I. I'm not exactly sure if I'm interpreting this correctly. So please feel free to correct me on this one, but I'm thinking that this might be something that Stephanie could speak to as far as when she did the modeling. How she created the facility boundary. It's a little hard to explain without seeing it. We should have planned to do something a little bit more visual. So you could have showed folks how that looks. Better. So that's feedback for us on kind of walking through the modeling, modeling in general, sometimes can be a little bit complicated to even explain. But Steph, do you have anything that you can add to that?
Um, I mean, I could actually, I have over Google Earth, kind of the facility layout, if that would be beneficial just to see. Where the receptors are and we're kind of where we started evaluating impacts.
If you want to go ahead and share your screen, that might be helpful to people. That way you can a little walk through the, the way you did your evaluation. I know when we start talking about receptors and impacts and. Things like that. Sometimes it's just like even me, I go, I don't know what you're talking about. That's a lot of words. So seeing it is helpful for me. So I think if you can share that, that would be.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see that. Yep. And of course your receptors are yellow, aren't they? Which is a little challenging.
Or, or just, I know, I tried to get a. A color that would, would anyway, you could see, but basically the, the blue squares cover blue shapes. On this, this is just an, basically my computer model, my, my dispersion model overlaid on Google Earth. So the blue on here are all the buildings at the Ameritai facility. And I know somebody had mentioned wanting to know stack locations. They're very, very hard to see. In this, but there are little red dots on top of the buildings that are where the stacks are located. But again, that's something that potentially we could share. That would be. Easier to see. But what we do here, the red outline surrounding this facility, that's what we call a property boundary. We put receptors, which I had talked about before, which we call pseudo monitors. We put those at 25 meter spacing all around the property boundary. And then our pseudo monitors are all these plus signs in orange. Every single one of these spots is where we say, I want to know what the impact is at, at each of these locations. So you can see close in. Typically impacts are close to the facility, close to the property boundary. That was the case. For the modeling for Ameritai. For some of the fluids, the impacts were either kind of here to the northern portion of the facility or to. The east side of the facility. That's pretty much where the maximum impacts were occurring and. And again, fairly close into the facility. But we also want to know the surrounding area. So I'm going to kind of zoom out here. And I had mentioned that we did receptors about two and a half miles. This red line right here, kind of to the right, was me just measuring, okay? From about the center of the facility going out, what's that distance? And that was, I think it was 2.4 or 2.5 miles. And within this blue square right here, that is what we call our, our grid. So basically we determine impacts within this whole blue square. Um, further from the facility, um, like I said, all the way out to that about, you know, two and a half miles. We did look at what the impacts were, were there as well. But the impacts did occur closer in to the facility. Um, like I said, we set a receptors right at the property boundary itself. And the receptors were fairly dense close in and then went a little bit because impacts typically, um, are less as you go further from the facility. So the, um, distance of the, those pseudo receptors did spread out a little bit as you went further from the facility. But we did again, look at impacts, um, roughly about, you know, uh, close to two and a half miles in either direction of the facility.
Thanks for sharing that, Steph.
No problem.
That always helps me to kind of, to see it visually. I know maybe that doesn't help everybody, but it, like you said earlier, you can't measure something that isn't there yet. So you have to look at what might be there in the future and then say, is this going to comply or is this not going to comply? So, um, appreciate you going through that. There, the, the question about buffering, did, there was some clarification that that would be like, um, physical buffers to sort of prevent pollution from moving offsite. And, you know, that's not something that we required in this permit. But it's definitely something that we could look into whether the facility is planning to do that, whether there is something there. Um, it can definitely be a comment, even if we can't do it under our rules and regulations. It's something that we can pass forward to the facility to say like, hey, you know, residents would like you to do something like this. Maybe not something that we can force them to do, but we're certainly happy to be, um, a disseminator of that information as well. So there was another question just about the two facilities. And I know again, that can be kind of confusing. You know, how can they be considered two facilities when they are, you know, so close together? And like Jeff stated, doing a lot of the same kinds of things. And I think that might be helpful. The person who asked that question, if you want to talk to Jeff specifically about that, I know he would be happy to sort of walk you through that policy. It's kind of like, do you meet this step? Do you meet this step? Do you meet this step? And then at the end, you make a determination, are these two separate facilities or not, based on this very specific policy? So I know that's not a great answer, but it is the way we're required to look at these. So, um, that would be an interesting sort of training to do for people, I think at some later date. But it's definitely something that we go through as staff people to try to determine whether or not these facilities can be permitted separately. There was another question about employees and folks in the area that are working in the area. So, um, Myosha has their own sets of rules and regulations when it comes to pollutants in the air inside manufacturing facilities and inside industrial facilities, and they are not the same as ours. So that's definitely something that if we were out there though, being inspectors and we saw something of concern that we would share with our Myosha partners, but they do their own sort of inspections and have their own, um, regulations that they abide by. But it's something that again, if you wanted to chat with somebody over there, we could try to connect you with somebody. So just let me know if that's something that you would be interested in or not. Just trying to check through here and see what other questions that we haven't got through. So I apologize for, um, taking a little bit of time here. So, um, Jeff, there was another question that I wanted to put to you, maybe for a little bit more explanation on the violation notices that we've issued to this facility in the past. So I don't know, I know we talked about the fact that they had installed equipment that wasn't permitted, that needed a permit, that we needed to do this kind of evaluation on that we've been talking about tonight in order to say whether or not it was okay for them to be operating it there under the states and federal air quality rules and regulations. But I was wondering if the other violations that we have written, have they been odor violations? Have they been emissions violations? Like, do you have any idea what kind of other violations the facility has had in the past? Or was it that just those permitting ones?
Yeah, so we've had, uh, four violations in the recent past. I want to say, uh, I'll pick a date since about 2016. One, first one was for odors, uh, which we determined to be coming from the wash building. And in response to that violation notice, uh, the facility put additional controls, uh, on the wash building. And the wash building is the, the original part of the process where they take the titanium scrap. And, um, as, as Marina said, start crushing it underwater. And they also do some drying in those buildings. So it was probably from the dryers that we were getting the odors from. The second violation was for installing certain equipment without a permit. Um, that was taken care of through the initial permitting action. And then the third violation was for the seven mile building installations, uh, which occurred around 2018, 2019 timeframe. Uh, the final violation was one that was issued both by EPA and the state, uh, about, um, maybe three or four years ago during a joint inspection, when we found that one of the pollution control, um, e- equipment was operating slightly out of its range, based on their records. And their malfunction abatement plan requires for them to take certain actions when they find that. And then in this one instance, they didn't take the action that they needed to take. So, uh, that, and violation was issued by both EPA and the state for that, that failure. Um, so those are the four violations that have been issued in the recent past.
Thanks for that. Uh, if folks are interested, we're happy to share where you can find those violation notices and the company's response to those violation notices, um, for their actions and that, um, previous consent order, if you're interested. Um, I think Caitlin might be able to share that source information page in the chat for us, um, if she has a second to do that. Uh, there was another question here and Steph, I'm gonna have you speak to this one a little bit and then potentially Doreen. So the question is, does Eagle consider cumulative impacts of all the industries in a geof- geographic area when it comes to protecting human health or only one facility at a time? So we do not do cumulative impact assessments like you're thinking, where we look at everything in an area and we look at, um, all the things that can impact a person on a cumulative basis. But we do do some limited looks at that with, which is, sorry, I'm losing my words for a second. One, which is one of the things that does, that we're allowed to do under the rules and regulations. And part of that can be through that modeling that Stephanie does. So Steph, I don't know if, if you can talk a little bit about what you added in to your modeling? If you did that and kind of how that works? And then Doreen, if you have anything to add on that, I'm happy to have you speak to that as well.
For then, excuse me, for the analysis I did for this, this facility, they were all toxic pollutants. So for that, we do start with modeling, um, the, uh, the sources or the emissions that are within that permit. Um, I know, I think it was Marina or maybe it was Doreen had talked about how some of the impacts for, um, for, what was that chromium hexvalent, I believe it is. Um, that one, the initial risk screening level was not met. So basically our initial screening level that we have, the company for this permit was over that limit. Um, so because of that, we did do a facility wide model run. So with that, we added, I think it was five other emission units at the facility. And we modeled, I think it was 12 total sources. Because with that secondary risk screening level, we want to know what's the whole entire facility doing? And does that max impact from the whole facility meet the secondary risk screening level? So for that one pollutant, we did add and more than what we did for the other pollutants. We did more of a facility wide impact for that one. I don't know, Doreen, if you can explain a little bit more, if you have anything to add in regard to that.
Uh, I do have a little bit to add. That was a very good explanation. Um, also, uh, even though we don't do cumulative risk, we kind of have an idea of what's in the, um, in the air because we do monitoring. Um, and maybe Erica can talk about where the closest monitor is. So we do have kind of an idea of what's already in the air. We do not do, uh, cumulative risk because a lot of things that, um, are part of a cumulative risk, the air quality division doesn't have any ability to regulate. So we, we don't, um, we can't regulate, um, what you're drinking, um, your indoor air. We can't regulate truck traffic. Um, there's a lot of things that would go into a cumulative risk that we, we have no authority to, to, um, evaluate. Uh, we have, um, at, uh, well, we do have the particulate matter. Um, that is pretty much, um, regulated as a group. Um, we have pulled out some of the chemicals that we had, um, even though they're particles, they, they're of concern because of their toxicity. So we have, even though they could be part of the particulate matter, um, federal, um, that the federal government regulates, we do also look at, for example, hexavalent chromium. It's a particle, but it's a carcinogen. And, um, it was more, um, health protective to look at that as a separate, a separate chemical. So Erica, would you want to talk about monitoring at all?
Sure. I think I'll just add that our closest air monitor to the site, it's less than two miles away. It's right behind Osborne High School. And at that site, we don't measure metals, but we do measure 2.5, PM 2.5. And we currently are measuring every 24, um, every six days. And with this year, we're actually upgrading that site to a continuous PM 2.5 monitor. Um, over, for quite some time, that monitor has been under the NACS for PM 2.5. And the NACS is the National Ambient Air Quality Standards that EPA puts out to, um, give us a baseline of what is a health-based level for these pollutants in the air, in a particular air shown.
So thanks Erica. Just to make sure everybody knows Erica's talking about PM 2.5 is particulate matter less than 2.5, um, in size. So it's the little tiny, the little tiny dust that can get down in your lungs. So we have a lot of monitors around the state that sort of look at those regional numbers. Those are the ones that are measuring some of the pollutants from the smoke events that we've been having and things like that. So it's nice that that monitor, that's the closest to this facility is going to be upgraded to a continuous monitor looking for those fine particulates that we know are, you know, the more dangerous ones. Um, it is after seven, I'm going to just do one more question. And if we didn't get to your question or you have more questions, that's why we do these hearings and meetings before the end of the comment period. We're definitely available to answer more questions after this if we need to. Um, but Marina, this one's going to be free. So the question is, can you talk a little bit about the control equipment that the company is proposing to make sure that the pollutants are reduced? If you could talk a little bit about what you've put in the permit in that regard, that would be helpful, I think, for folks too.
Yeah. And actually that was part of the, uh, reason why they submitted an application in the first place was to replace some of their existing control devices. Um, my understanding is that they were pretty, um, well-worn and needed to be replaced. So, um, so yeah, so the equipment that they have there, um, are what's called, uh, wet scrubbers. A, they control particulate, um, essentially air goes through, um, like a tube and it comes in contact, uh, with, with water or some liquid. And it, uh, reduces the amount of particulates coming out into the air.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. So we're going to shift over to the hearing portion of the night right now. I know there was a couple of questions that just came in. Uh, we'll definitely respond to those in writing to folks, um, or obviously give us a call too. We'll give that contact information out in a little bit. So panelists, thank you very much for your question answering tonight. Appreciate it. This is a little bit of a complicated issue, so I appreciate everybody being on. You guys can go ahead and turn your cameras off if you want to. And I'll invite you to turn your camera on as we move over into this hearing portion. All right. So just as a reminder, during this portion of the night, we won't be responding to questions that you put in your comments. This is literally just to put these comments that you have on the record. Folks brought up a lot of good points tonight, things that can definitely be included as comments, um, later on. They, this part will start with a very sort of dry opening statement that I'll just kind of lay the groundwork for what the hearing is all about. You'll be able to raise your hand to make your verbal comment. You can make your comment in writing in the question and answer, and I'll read it out loud if you don't feel comfortable, um, doing that. You also don't have to make a comment right now. You can make your comment, uh, later on if that is more comfortable for you. So I'm just going to move over really quickly into doing this opening statement. And then we'll get right to taking your comments on the record. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I am with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I will be the hearing officer tonight. Annette Switzer, the Air Quality Division Director, is the decision maker for this permit application. And she'll be listening to your comments this evening. She will be considering all comments prior to making a decision. This hearing is for a proposed permit at Ameritai Manufacturing LLC located at 19300 Filer Avenue in Detroit, Michigan. The company has requested changes to their existing air permit number 549-97C. And these changes include increasing the allowed amount of metal processed in the powder manufacturing process, replacing control devices for powder processes and one of the crushers, removing equipment formerly owned by the company because it is now owned and operated by a different nearby company. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can make the requested changes, they must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to get anyone interested in the proposed permit and opportunity provide information we are able to deciding whether to approve the permit or if there are additional issues to consider. Please note, the proposed permit is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be issued at all. Please recognize the department can only use information you provide if it relates to the criteria we are able to use in making a decision. So for example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within our authority. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed project. So we're happy to make note of your position, but please understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. The hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed project. The public comment period for the proposed permit began on June 21st and will end at midnight on August 7th, 2023. Additional comments or information may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment during this hearing, by email or by voicemail. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the draft permit, in the final permit, excuse me, and the reasons for the change. In all three of these scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was at, on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision. And if applicable. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and, if applicable, the approved permit. As stated previously, you may submit a comment, a written comment anytime during the comment period by US post or email. If you, or you may call into the comment, the public comment voicemail. You may also type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment that way. I will read aloud all comments you submit via the question box unless you state do not read. If you'd like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I'll unmute your line so you can speak. We'll limit your comment time to about three minutes. So if you're speaking, I'll let you know when you have about 30 seconds left and I'll do my best to address commenters in the order your hands are raised. But please bear with us as the technology does have challenges to that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. So thanks so much for your attention. I will now be getting the name, begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. So if you'd like to make a comment now, feel free to raise your hand and we'll, we will unmute your line. I'll call your name and then unmute your line for you. Okay, Julius, if you don't mind just stating your name for the record and any affiliation that you might have, and then you can go ahead and unmute yourself and, and go ahead with your comment whenever you're ready.
Julius DeBarre-Layburn. I follow to an urban development corporation, but also I live in the community. My emphasis, really want to emphasize this. I noted that what was mentioned, that there was a process whereby the amount of raw material to be used in the manufacturing process was something that the company itself would have to monitor and maintain. In addition, I want to emphasize that the current owner is of this new facility was the owner of the older facility. And they clearly demonstrated over a period of years, their inability to stay in compliance. And I want to really emphasize that we've already suffered a negative impact from this facility, from the prior owner, and the desire to increase output. And even though it might fall within allowable limits, this owner has clearly demonstrated presently, as well as in the past, his lack of desire to reach out to the community and work with the community, his arrogance to believe that just because he has a need for something is to our benefit. And I want to indicate that there was a harm. I don't know if that was measured through the models. And do the models allow for people being dishonest? The assumption of the model is that this person is going to follow all the rules. And I would like to know what allowances and what variables that they check to see what if, what impact would it have on us? If this person continues his past patterns going into future, can that be modeled out? What happens if he decides not to follow the rules of compliance that you set forth? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your comment. We really appreciate that. If anybody else would like to make, make a comment, please feel free to raise your hand. Okay, hold on one second. All right, Jennifer Fassbender, you'd like to go ahead and state your name for the record and any affiliation that you may have, and then go ahead with your comment whenever you're ready.
Hello, I am Jennifer Fassbender and I am with the Detroit Hamtramck Coalition for Advancing Healthy Environments, as well as Breathe Free Detroit. I am, I, I submitted several questions in the Q and A and I'm not, I, I'm just trying to sort of absorb some of the, the comments, the, the responses to my questions. I'm just, I'm, I'm just overwhelmed on this really hot day. And it's not lost on me that, that folks who, who live downwind from this facility have to choose between keeping their windows closed or being exposed to more heavy metals in, in their air. I'm with the previous speaker. It's definitely also not lost on me that this company in a consent decree agreement with Eagle just decided to start up a new company, doing basically the same thing, but wants to do even more. And, and it's overwhelming to me after having fought for years against US Ecology Hazardous Waste Processing Facility that similarly, this manufacturing facility, Eagle's closest air monitor is two miles away. And, and they are only checking it every six days. I, I guess I just wonder about with Eagle, if, if environmental justice concerns are even allowed to be considered, not only with the cumulative health impacts that have already, concerns that have already been raised. But, but the, it's definitely not lost on me that, that these facilities not, are, are not considered cumulatively. And they are always in black and brown and poor communities. It just seems like Eagle's job, even though it's supposedly our environmental agency, which should be looking over the people who, who live in Michigan. And in this case, you know, we live in Detroit. It seems that Eagle's job is just to push through applications. And if they fall into some sort of violation, we'll then just test them again and, and keep testing until somehow they are in compliance. Or in this case, just start a whole new business with the same owners doing the same thing. It's, it's, it definitely is, I, I just can't imagine that anyone would not consider this environmental racism. I have, I have other comments that I would like to make and I will do so in writing after I have a chance to review this, this recording again. So if I could please have the recording of this information session sent to me, I would like to review it and get my thoughts together to, to make another formal comment about this situation. Thank you.
No, thank you very much for your comment. Yes, we will share the recording as soon as it's available. Could be tomorrow, might be Monday. Just to let you know, we'll get that to you as soon as we possibly can. So the next person that I have on the list is Patricia. Patricia, if you don't mind, giving us your name, any affiliation that you might have, and then go ahead with your comment whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Patricia Bosch. I am an area resident, living just a few blocks east of this location. But I share many of the same concerns that Jennifer raised. Namely, it seems odd to me that you would not, as an agency charged with protecting the public health, that you would not be doing communica, cumulative monitoring. We live sort of middle of the way to City Airport. I live at Outer Drive Van Dyke, which is roughly a half a mile from Detroit City Airport. And we know from previous airport studies that our area has been very toxic with air, all types of air pollution, in particular, the particulate matter. I had cancer in 2006. I went through chemo and radiation. And to this day, I still suffer from after effects of that chemo and radiation. Doctors may say, well, that's a price that you pay for still being here. But every day you live with the threat of cancer reoccurring. And to find out at this hearing that Eagle is permitting pollutants that are cancer carcinogenic, known to be carcinogenic causing is no comfort to me. And I think that is time that we start to look at cumulative effects. And certainly I agree that this was all fabricated with a, a playing of the rules with the creation of a second company to get less compliance. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Patricia, for your comment. We really appreciate that. I'll give everybody just another minute or so to decide if you would like to make a comment. Again, no pressure tonight. Plenty of time after the meeting to submit your comments in other ways, and we will go over that as well in a minute. Just a reminder as well, if you are on the phone and you would like to make a comment, we do have one person on the phone. You can press pound two and that will raise your hand for me so I can see that you'd like to make a comment. Patricia, did you want to make another comment? I see your hands raised again.
Yes, I'm, thank you for this opportunity.
That's okay. You can go ahead.
Because I live near Outer Drive in Van Dyke, though I'm sort of middle of the road to both City Airport and other industrial facilities, as well as Ameritide Tri-Tech. I'm concerned about the discharges to the city sewers. Right now, if you travel to Outer Drive in Van Dyke, you would see a massive sewer interceptor project that is being planned by Oakland and McComb, Great Lakes Water Authority. And I am very concerned about the, the effects that this fallout of the toxin, toxic carcinogens could have on our water supply, especially with these interceptor projects with, you can smell the sewage in the air as on, on certain nights. And I recognize that you're going to release a phone number where people can call in odor complaints. And I think that is a partial solution, but it begins with knowing that there are air pollutants that ultimately end up as discharges to our city sewers and thereby increase the carcinogenic levels. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. Vanessa, I'm gonna, I don't know why your hand isn't working, your, your virtual hand. But I do have you here. You should be able to unmute yourself, just state your name for the record and any affiliation, and then go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yes, thanks. My name is Vanessa Peake. I'm with Urban Development Corporation. Nonprofit organization doing work in the area. I am also a resident. And for numerous years, we've had problems with Ameritide Manufacturing over the years, continuously engaging with Eagle in an effort to finally catch them in the act of polluting. One of the greatest problems that we have in, over the, in, in the past years, our particulate matter. And it becomes very visible. Catching them is one thing. If you go to their facility even now, you can see the fallout of the metal. Very concerned about the fact of, here you are, you're going to increase the amount of emissions for chromium, as well as nickel, both for carcinogens. You know, and, and that just really baffles me that Eagle would do this or would even consider this in as much as they were previously in a consent agreement. I would ask one to really explain, I'm not clear on how they were able to finagle to remove themselves from the consent agreement. Have had the opportunity to actually visit the site, Ameritide Manufacturing and Tri-Tech. Tri-Tech is actually operating out of Ameritide Manufacturing. And if you look at the new ownership of the company of Ameritide, they tell you they utilize the previous owner of companies to actually grow companies. And the owner of Tri-Tech has had a history of non-compliance. None care for the community. We literally don't exist. I don't think people understand what it's like on a beautiful sunny afternoon to just want to have some fresh air. And you can't leave your windows open for the odors to come through. We really need some help. And it's, it's, it's really a feeling sometimes that EPA and Eagle, while you are present, and, and we do acknowledge that you exist, you know, the degree of concern is not where it really needs to be because this community is in need of help. And we actually need Eagle EPA to talk to these companies about, hey, you know, the, the question is, how many of the residents within a geographic area actually really know? Without us community groups going door to door and passing out literature, how many people really know that here it is, this is a company, they have a permit to emit nickel and chromium, which are both carcinogens, but now Eagle, knowing of its reputation, historical past, and EPA are now going to increase their emissions? And how do you answer for the fact that Tri-Tech is actually manufacturing in a Ameritides building? It, it's just really not making sense. And there's never really any talk about what additional things can be done to really truly reduce emission, emissions from a buffering standpoint. So hopefully, you know, we'll get more feedback, but very disappointing at this moment in time to see that additional emissions are, are potentially going to be approved when we need to have a time where we can truly say that they're in compliance. And to, a, a, at this moment in time, we're not there. So thank everyone for your time and consideration.
Yeah, thank you so much, Vanessa, for taking the time to make that comment. We really do appreciate folks spending this last hour and a half or so with us. We have a little bit more to go through, but I want to make sure that there's no other comments that folks want to make at this point. So I'm going to give, give it another minute or so here. All right, Jennifer, you should be able to make another comment if you'd like to right now. Go ahead and just, if you could just say your name again for the record, that would be helpful.
Thank you very much. I appreciate having an opportunity to, to make a second comment. I just wanted to, to state on the record just some of the questions that I put in the Q and A earlier as it relates to concern about the consent decree agreement that the company has with Eagle. It's my understanding that, that when a company is in a consent decree, that it means that, that they must, they're, they're held by us, a very strong standard with Eagle, stronger than if they had not had been placed in this consent decree, that, that they're more likely to actually be shut down. And, and, and it, you know, of course, as, as it has been established, the, the same individuals who, who have been entered into this consent decree are just coming up with a new name to, to essentially avoid that. And, and I believe that, that Jeff said that since 2016, this company has had four violations. And I'm, as, as someone who is active in the community, it is, it is understood that for however many times the community calls when smelling this, this facility, that for, for all of those times, that for, for all of those times, that, that community has the burden of calling Eagle to report odors. That it, it's really disappointing to think that, that they've only, that has only resulted in four violations from Eagle. So, it seems to me that, that Eagle's air quality division should need an overhaul of its own. Because when, when community members are continuously calling and that results in four violations over a period of, well, Jeff started off by saying since two thousand and sixteen, so that's seven years. And, and, you know, and, but still, they, they ended up in a consent decree. I can imagine if Eagle actually responded in, in due diligent time when these complaints were, were expressed from community members. It seems like this company should have been shut down a long time ago and, and it, it's just ironic that we're sitting here having to listen to this presentation about the possibility that Eagle, who are supposed to be caring for the health of the community, seems like they're just a permit pusher that, that they, that they will just do whatever they need to do in order to allow these facilities to, to wreak havoc on, on our communities. And, and I know I was the person who had asked about the, the harms that are done to the employees of.
Just sorry to interrupt, Jennifer. I just wanted to let you know you have about thirty more seconds.
Okay, thank you. The harms that are done to the employees and that, that is, you know, as, as Eagle is, just silos that off to, you know, to a different agency, but the employees are also community members and Eagle is tasked with protecting community members. So, I just, I just wanted to, to just reiterate some of those questions that I had. And thanks again for, for allowing me to speak again.
Yes, no problem. Appreciate that comment. All right. So, I think we're going to go ahead and close the hearing at this point. It just involves me reading another very short statement. I promise it's not as long as the first one. And then we do have a couple of things to go over before we sign off on the meeting tonight. So, if you want to stick around, please do that. So, thank you so much for taking the time to participate in this meeting tonight. We really do appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. So, the hearing is now closed. Thanks again for attending. I'm just going to go over a couple things that might be of interest to you. So, we talked about how this is not your only opportunity to submit an official comment on this proposed permit. You can send a note to us in the mail if you'd like, and because we do have one person on the phone, I'm just going to go ahead and read that address. You would send that to the permit section manager, and that's at Eagle, E-G-L-E, AQD, which stands for Air Quality Division. The address is P O Box three zero two six zero, and that's Lansing, Michigan. And the zip code is four eight nine zero nine. You can also email a comment to us. That email address is eagle-aqd-pti-publiccomments@michigan.gov. So, that's eagle, E-G-L-E dash AQD dash P as in Paul, T as in Tom, I as in Igloo, and then the word public comments, all one word, at michigan.gov. So, Michigan's all spelled out. Or one of the easiest ways to really give us a comment is to call our voicemail and do a little bit like what you did tonight, if you made a comment, or if you heard folks making a comment similarly to that. And that number is five one seven two eight four zero nine zero zero. So, all of the documents and things associated with this proposed permit can be found online at michigan.gov slash eagle, E-G-L-E, air public notice. So, E-G-L-E, air public notice is all one word. So, if you're looking for some more information, or this was the first time you were kind of hearing a lot of this information tonight, feel free to check that out, or just give us a call, give you a phone number to get, to give us a call. We're happy to point you in the right direction. Sometimes our webpages can be a little bit overwhelming. Much rather have folks give us a call and ask than struggle to find something. So, you're going to, on that website, you're going to find the proposed project summary. So, that's just a very high level piece of information about this proposed project. It's going to align a little bit more like with what Marina talked about tonight, but it's going to give you a little bit more information as well. The technical fact sheet is more of a deep dive into the review that Marina and the permitting team did on establishing what conditions would be allowed under this proposed permit. So, it talks about rules and regulations, calculations, things like that. So, if you want a deeper dive, that would be where you would want to go. You can also look at those proposed permit terms and conditions. And then we will post a link to the meeting recording, but we'll also send it to anybody who provide us an email and was on the meeting tonight. I will just email it to you because it's easier that way. So, if you have any questions as you're looking through these items and you just are having a hard time understanding what's going on or why they are the way they are, feel free to reach out to us. I'm going to give you a couple numbers that, if you're calling in, I'll just read a couple out loud, but folks that are listening in online, we've got everybody from the panel on tonight on the screen right now. So, Marina's phone number is five one seven six four eight seven nine nine five. So, you can also email her. She has a challenging last name. I'm not going to lie. I will spell it out. It's Ostazuski. I had to practice saying that a few years ago when she first started working here. But her email address is O S T A S Z E W S K I, the letter M, and then the number one, and that's at michigan.gov. If you do have comments, concerns about impacts that you're having, if you're having odors or things like that, you can call Jeff directly, and his phone number is three one three four five six four six eight one. So, definitely feel free to reach out to him. We do have an online complaint form. So, when we send the follow-up note out with the recording and other information, we'll include the link to that as well. Sometimes people find it easier. You don't have to use it. You can definitely give us a call. Or you can always call our pollution emergency number at eight hundred two nine two four seven zero six. So, I know that was a lot to take in tonight. I think some of the commenter said it very well. It's a lot of information to take in. So, you have a few more days to put in those official comments, and as I stated before, we're always here to help answer questions the best of, of our ability. So, thank you so much again for joining us tonight. And Caitlin, if you want to go ahead and, and the meeting for folks, you can feel free to do that at this time.